Counselor Baker.
I am.
Counselor Kim.
Here.
Counselor Siomo. Yes, you're here. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Garrison. Counselor Janey. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem. Madam President, we have the Honorable Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I am informed by the clerk that a quorum is present at this time. If all counselors, staff, and colleagues, as well as guests, could please rise, Counselor Flaherty will introduce our clergy for the day. I ask that everyone remain standing after the invocation while he takes us through the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Sister Evelyn is no stranger to the Boston City Council. We had the honor and privilege of hosting her last year, as well as five years ago, when she had retired to the Sisters of Charity Nazareth Mother House in Kentucky after more than 60 years of service at St. Bridget Church and Parish in South Boston. She made the decision to enter the Sisters of Charity Nazareth back in 1932. After teaching for over a decade in Kentucky, she and several other Sister of Charity Nazareth nuns opened St. Elizabeth School in Clarksdale, Mississippi back in 1947. Sisters of Charity Nazareth were already serving the parish in religious education when they saw a need for education of children. Each sister taught two grades. Sister Evelyn taught first and second grade. After three years, Sister Evelyn left Mississippi, returned to South Boston, where she would continue her ministry and education over the next 60-plus years. She is the last nun from the community of the Sisters of Charity Nazareth in South Boston, and the first to set up shop in the convent at M Street and East Broadway 102 years ago. She's also no stranger to Boston politics. Her father is the late Boston City Council Bill Hurley, who served as council president from 1949 to 1955, and also opened up the Hurley's Log Cabin Restaurant, which was located on Albany Street. Sister tells me that a baked stuffed lobster was $2.25 at the time. Sister turned 104 last month. We're glad to have her back here. When she returns to the motherhouse on Monday, the following day, which will be Tuesday, she will be the oldest living nun of record in the Sisters of Charity Nazareth. So without further ado, someone has had a profound impact on me, my commitment to service, as well as so many people throughout the community, serving decades and generations at St. Bridget's. I present to you a dear friend of all of us here, Sister Evelyn Hurley.
Is this?
Your Honor.
It's an honor, of course, for me to be here. When my father was in the council, we were not allowed to go into places like this. So this is an honor just to be with all of you. And I'm very grateful to Michael for the invitation. And I guess now it's time for the prayer. Loving God of compassion and peace, bless all of us abundantly, especially the members of this Boston City Council and their staff. Make them ever mindful of the poor, the marginalized, and the forgotten ones. Let immigrants always receive a warm welcome as our own ancestors did. And may all of us always be thankful for the continuous blessings that you shower on us every day, which sometimes, unfortunately, we overlook or even take for granted. God bless us all, and God bless America, our beloved country. Amen.
Pledge allegiance, Sister. Over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we're going to extend an invitation on your 105th birthday today for next year. How's that sound? All right? Very good.
Thank you so much, Sister.
Glad to be here.
It's a pleasure. Take your time. Watch your step. Walk on. I just want to acknowledge, we have some incredible students from the eighth grade from the Joyce Kilmer School. They could just quickly stand. They were here for a special meeting and want to thank Counselor O'Malley. They care about many issues, including issues in the public safety realm. So it's always a pleasure to have youth attend our council meetings. So thank you so much for being here. And Counselor Asabi George, you have a special presentation? Counselor Asabi George has a special presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. And if our guests could follow me up, I'll get started while they're on their way. Today, I'm honored to recognize some of the volunteers and health center representatives who participated in last week's first-ever citywide needle take-back day here in the city of Boston. We had 17 health centers offer temporary collection hours and provide our residents with information about the permanent collection sites throughout Boston. Participating last week were Boston's Health Care for the Homeless Program, Bowden Street Health Center, Brookside Community Health Center, Charles River Community Health, Codman Square Health Center, Dot House Health, East Boston Neighborhood Health Center, Fenway Community Health Center, the Geiger Gibson Community Health Center, Greater Rosendale Medical Center, Mattapan Community Health Center, MGH Healthcare Center in Charlestown, New Health in Charlestown, South Boston Community Health Center, the South End Community Health Center, Jamaica Plain Health Center, and the Upphams Corner Health Center. Standing with me today are many of the point people from each of the health centers, as well as a number of our volunteers who assisted with last week's needle take-back day. We heard stories, who we met earlier this morning to talk about and reflect on the day, and we heard stories about, some of the stories that came with the needles that were returned to us last week. From someone who returned needles from infertility treatments that happened 14 years ago, and the kids were turning into full-grown teenagers, and those needles were a memory of that time. We heard the story of a woman who was throwing away needles from a mom who had passed away a number of years before that, and this was her last bit of housecleaning remaining from her mom. And for her, it was a way to sort of cleanse both the house, but also a little bit of cleansing for the heart and the soul. And then we also heard of people that brought back needles that had been saving from their pets who were dealing with diabetes. And this work and the education that happened last week was really very important for us to do, especially for the education that happened across our city. I'd like to give a special note of thanks to the BU Activist Lab. We are joined today by Associate Dean Harold Cox from the BU School of Public Health. He's a professor in their Community Health Science Department. Dean Cox, thank you for joining us today and for the BU Activist Lab help in getting us some volunteers through your activist lab. I want to also express my gratitude to the Mass League of Community Health Centers, the Mayor's Office of Recovery Services, as well as the Boston Health Commission. Boston Medical Center's Grayken Center for Addiction also supported us and purchased all of our needle take-back bins that were used across all of our community health centers. And 24/7 Trauma did all of the disposal. One of the greatest challenges with needle collection is proper disposal that isn't expensive. So 24 Trauma was able to help with that. The success of our needle take-back day shows the importance of consistent access to safe needle disposal sites across our city. I look forward to continuing this work with our community health centers. I look forward to continuing this work with our pharmacies across the city. You'll see later in today's meeting, I'm filing an ordinance that would require that. At this time, I'd like to invite Dean Cox to say a few words. Thank you for being here, Dean.
Good afternoon. I want to thank Counselor Asabi George for the important work that she's done in calling attention to this very important issue. We forget sometimes about what people are supposed to do with their needles. We forget that there are people who have chronic diseases when they have diabetes, or maybe they're taking care of their pets, or perhaps other kinds of things, and we forget exactly. So what do you do with those needles when you're through with them? So calling attention to this important issue is very critically important for our city. We only have a small number of places that people can legally take their needles. And the important work that the counselor is doing is both calling to attention to people what they can do, as well as increasing the number of places that people can take those needles as well. So I appreciate my colleagues who are here with us today. I appreciate the involvement of our students at the university who participated in this project, and I especially appreciate the work the counselor has done in continuing to call this issue to our attention. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Good day. And so as all of you come join us for a picture, I do want to thank Malika Lucien from my office, who really spearheaded this effort. That was no small feat, dealing with all the work that it took to put that day together. So thank you, and we'll do our phone line calls. And make sure we can see your face up front. We usually don't have someone tall in the room. I love it. That's what happens when you ask a politician. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. That's a big one.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
It was getting too tight. I have one more tonight. Some of my words last night. So we know what else we think we have. Yeah? Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Asabi George, for that special presentation. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes of the last council meeting are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor. Madam Clerk, if we could read dockets 0718 through 0719 together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0718, message and order approving supplemental appropriation for the order for Boston Public Health Commission for the FY19 in the amount of $1,933,679 to cover the FY19 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Health Commission and the Boston EMS Division, excuse me, of the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association. The terms of the contract are July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, and July 1st, 2018, through June 20th, 2021. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2% effective as the first pay period of July of each fiscal year. The agreements also contain other benefits, including increases to hazardous duty and awards. Filed in the office of the city clerk on April 29th, 2019, docket number 0719, message and order to reduce the FY19 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $1,933,679 to provide funding for the Boston Public Health Commission for the FY19 increase contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Health Commission and the Boston EMS Division of the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association.
Dockets 0718 and 0719 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, if we could read dockets 0720 through 0723?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0720, message and order for confirmation of the renewal appointments of constables authorized to serve civil process upon the filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2022. Docket number 0721, message and order for confirmation of the appointment of new constables authorized to serve civil service upon the filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2022. Docket number 0722, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of renewal inspectional service constables authorized to serve civil process upon the filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2022. Docket number 0723, message and order for the confirmation of the appointments of the new inspectional service constables authorized to serve civil process upon the filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, the Chair seeks a suspension of the rules and confirmation of dockets 0720 through 0723. I will take each one separately. For docket 0720, all those in favor of confirmation say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0720 has been confirmed. For docket 0721, all those in favor of confirmation say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0721 has been confirmed. For docket 0722, all those in favor of confirmation say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0722 has been confirmed. And lastly, docket 0723, all those in favor of confirmation say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0723 has been confirmed. Moving on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, if we could read dockets 0724 through 0730 together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0724, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of January 30th, 2019. Docket number 0725, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of March 13th, 2019. Docket number 0726, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of March 20th, 2019. Docket number 0727, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of March 27th, 2019. Docket number 0728, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of April 3rd, 2019. Docket number 0729, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of April 10th, 2019. And docket number 0730, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the Fourth Amendment to the report and decision on the Lafayette Corporation Center Chapter 121A project.
Dockets 0724 through 0730 will be placed on file. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0622 through 0625, orders for the FY20 operating budget, including annual appropriations to departmental operations, annual appropriations to the school department, appropriations for other post-employment benefits known as OPEB, appropriations for certain transportation and public realm improvements, and appropriation for certain park improvements.
Dockets 0622 through 0625 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0626, capital budget appropriations, including loan orders and lease purchase agreements.
Dockets 0626 through 0628 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0731, Counselor Flynn offered the following resolution, recognizing the contributions of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders during the Asian-Pacific American Heritage Month in May.
Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I would like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Wu and Counselor Flaherty as original cosponsors of the resolution.
Any objections? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Wu and Counselor Flaherty as original cosponsors. Thank you, Counselor Flynn.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, as you know, May is Asian-Pacific American Heritage Month. And since today is May 1st, I think it is timely that we recognize and file a resolution in honor of the outstanding contributions made by Asian-Americans and Pacific Islander residents. As you know, I represent a large AAPI community in my district. Chinatown is the third-largest Chinatown in the United States. I also have a large Chinese community in South Boston, in the South End, in the Bay Village as well. Outside of my district, there is a large Vietnamese community in Dorchester that the council president represents well, and Counselor Baker represents well, as do the at-large city councils. In Counselor Siomo's district, we also have a Korean community as well. And we want to thank Counselor Siomo for his leadership. A large Cambodian community in Lowell, as well as other AAPI communities throughout the state. For over 150 years, or since the start of the completion of the transcontinental railroad that was built by a large percentage of Chinese, they built the railroad across our country. And even when they were finished with the railroad, they came back and settled in many cities. They still weren't treated with the respect or dignity, and discrimination was commonplace. Japanese and Filipino immigrants were a huge workforce as well. Other AAPI residents, they're our neighbors, business owners, educators, police officers. They are policymakers as well. Counselor Wu. Nina Lang, the city council of Quincy. Tran Nguyen is a state representative from Andover. Maria Robinson is a state representative from Framingham, and she's the first Korean-American elected as a state representative. Taki Chan represents Quincy as a state legislator, as Donald Wong does as well in Saugus. The AAPI community faced discrimination, as I mentioned, and racism in the past, and there are still challenges facing this community. We have to continue to advocate and stand up for our AAPI community, especially at a time when our immigrant rights are violated. Madam President, I also had the opportunity to, when I served on active duty, I served with a lot of Asian-Americans as well, and I saw their amazing contribution to our country in places such as the Persian Gulf, or throughout the United States. Asian-American members are our family, and they're contributing greatly to our city and to our country. And it's an honor for me, as the District 2 city councilor, to represent such a large Asian-American and Asian community. Before this meeting, I had the opportunity to host a coffee reception with some of our friends from Chinatown, some of our friends from the Vietnamese community as well. And I just wanted to say welcome and thank you for your outstanding contributions you have made to Boston, you have made to our country. And it's an honor, really, for this body to recognize the enormous contributions of all Asian-American brothers and sisters that are here, but also across this country as well. Thank you, Madam President.
No, thank you, Counselor Flynn, and thank you for recognizing them as well. Counselor Wu, you have the floor. Our very own Counselor Wu.
President, I rise to thank the lead sponsor on this. Counselor Flynn has just been such a friend and ally of the API community, and he tells me that the final Lunar New Year banquet this past weekend in Chinatown was great. They stretched from January until April, and I think he went to over 30 of them this year. He is a presence everywhere in the community, and I am just so happy to serve alongside him. To have the recognition initiated by him for API Heritage Month is very special as well. The API community is the most diverse sort of sub-community when it comes to not just language and countries of origin, but socioeconomic situation as well. And so I think for the community, it's been a balance and sometimes a tension of how do you speak for so many different experiences, so many different voices, so many different cultures? And to have a month and a recognition that kind of brings people together under the leadership of those in office has been, is nice to make sure that we are doing our part in convening people even beyond May when it comes to that as well. So thank you so much, Counselor Flynn. Very proud to partner on this, and thank you for everything that you do for the community.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to just first thank the maker of this resolution. Yesterday, we stood with our Vietnamese brothers to commemorate the 44th anniversary of the fall of Saigon. Vietnam was a war that was personally, my family, I had an uncle that came back injured, and a lot of families in the whole country went through a lot of strife in those years. Nothing compared to what the Vietnamese people went through in-country and the people that left there, the refugees. Their pain and struggling to get here has actually been, I would say, a positive for us in Boston, because we now have large groups of Vietnamese people that live in our districts and the value that they add, the businesses that they open up, and just the beautiful, beautiful people that they are. And I'm thrilled to be here, and thank you, Counselor Flynn, for doing this. And I just want to add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Janey, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Zachem, Counselor Edwards, as well as the Chair. Counselor Flaherty, are you looking to speak?
I'm already on it.
You're already as a cosponsor. Thank you. At this time, Counselor, and just one point of clarification, there is a substitution. It was just a minor spelling and clerical error that we corrected, so if you see another version, that's all of that it is. At this time, Counselor Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket, let's see what number this is. Docket 0731. All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0731 has been adopted.
Docket number 0732, Counselor Garrison offered the following resolution in support of Rosendale and West Roxbury residents fighting to stop a charter school from being built at 361 Belgrade Avenue.
Counselor Garrison, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have filed this resolution in support of the residents of Rosendale, West Roxbury, who are fighting to stop a charter school, Roxbury Prep, from being built at 361 Belgrade Avenue. I'm not expecting the other councils to vote on this, given all of the issues involved here. But I did want to personally go on record saying, because West Roxbury has one of the highest percentage of elderly in the city of Boston, perhaps the BPD-A can look at 361 Belgrade Avenue as a perfect place for elderly housing, but certainly not a charter school. And Madam, could we suspend the rules and take a vote on this?
Before we get to that, thank you, Counselor Garrison. I'm just going to acknowledge some other councils who I think want to speak on this. Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor. Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Madam President, I rise in opposition of 0732. I am not in support of the resolution by any stretch. I am the District 5 City Council where this development is taking place, or might take place, we don't know yet. I've gone to many, many meetings, I've received hundreds of emails, and worked hundreds of phone calls, and spent many, many hours on this very subject. Having said that, I do not support the school that's moving in. I treat it as a development project. I don't think this is a great location for it. I've been to Roxbury Prep many times, long before they sought out this site, so I have a great relationship with them. This is not about the school, this is about the development and the traffic and the transportation issue. But I'm concerned that resolutions such as this from councils at large set an awful precedent. I think that the district city councilors have a great idea. This is right on the District 5, District 6 line. Matt and I have spent many, many hours together, not only at the site, but at community meetings and talking on the phone and conferences with many, many people about this. This is a development project, and I just think this is, a resolution such as this sets an awful precedent, and I actually don't think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Briefly, I rise to commend and support the District 5 Councilor, the host counselor of this proposed project. In his objection to using a city council resolution on a development issue like this, so I will, of course, back the district counselor who has been intimately involved in this process going back a number of years. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Zakim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to join my district colleagues. In their comments on this over the last several years, I've also received numerous emails and messages about this particular project, and I referred folks to the district counselor for where the project is, in some cases to their own district council if that was someone differently, and I think that's the appropriate way to handle these. The BPD-A is obviously conducting their review process, and for all the flaws in that process that we have all spoken about on more than one occasion on this floor, it certainly, I think, is a more appropriate venue than resolutions like this, particularly for something that is so far along, that has had so many community meetings that our colleagues who are most affected by this and who represent the areas most affected by this have been participating in. So, I rise to add my voice in opposition to this resolution, and thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Zakim. Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to, although I, to share just some comments, although I am on record opposing Roxbury Prep at this location, I do not support this resolution. I do think it is a complicated place when we are proposing resolutions regarding specific projects, so I will not be supporting this resolution as it's been presented today, docket number 732, although I do remain on record in opposition to the project itself and in following that through, obviously following the leadership of our District 5 and District 6 colleagues through the more natural process of the development process through the BPD-A and other channels and through the community process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, given the objection expressed by colleagues, I will assign docket 0732 to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Moving on to docket 0733.
Docket 0733, Counselor O'Malley offered the following resolution, supporting high-speed East-West rail between Boston and Springfield.
Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to begin by really acknowledging some of the tremendous work done by members of this body as it relates to supporting the MBTA, making sure that we have better service, making sure that we're able to demand more from the state in terms of funding and growing and expanding the MBTA. And I want to offer this resolution today to complement efforts as it relates to a real, strong, thriving public transit system. For many, many years, for decades, for generations, there's been talk about having a high-speed East-West rail, a train that would go from Boston to Springfield, stopping at several towns along the route. This could be something that is absolutely transformative for our Commonwealth. You talk about some of the issues that we are dealing with as Bostonians: housing, affordability, congestion, traffic. You looked at some other cities outside of Boston or Greater Boston that are having the reverse effect. They're having a not-quite-so-strong, in some case falling, real estate market, they're seeing unemployment numbers grow. This is a way that we can absolutely address it. I wanted to really highlight and acknowledge Western Mass State Senator Eric Lesser, a friend to many of us, who has been doing yeoman's work in this space for quite some years. He has been a real champion for innovative solutions to address the region, Western Mass' declining employment and population. And I think that one of the things that often trips up better advancement at the state level as it relates to the MBTA is folks from outside of Boston or Greater Boston or areas where the tea serves communities don't see the direct need or the direct impact on why they, as folks from Central Mass or Western Mass or the Cape or the Islands, should really take a keen interest in why we need to be funding regional transit proposals. And this is one way we can do that. We can marry the Western, Eastern Mass communities coming together, talking about what in our mutual interest will serve all of our communities, and particularly those in the middle. And Boston should care about this. Boston should care about Western Mass, because the economic challenges of Western Mass are obviously connected to the problems that we face here in Boston. We have high housing costs, we have a high demand for space, Western Mass has a low cost of living, but less opportunity. So I'm proposing this resolution to support East-West rail as a step to equalize the situation. Improved regional rail could take pressure off Boston's housing market while invigorating the whole region. Boston's population increases significantly during the day, and we all know the traffic congestion caused by commuters coming into our city. But with East-West rail, what is good for commuters is good for residents of Boston as well. East-West rail means fewer cars clogging our highways, less climate change, shorter commutes that will make Boston a more attractive place for businesses. It is a true win-win that can truly unite our Commonwealth and help address two of Boston's most significant challenges: housing costs and congestion. If this body goes on record in support of the innovative idea of high-speed East-West rail, it will provide crucial support to Senator Lesser and advocates across the Commonwealth that will make this idea a reality one day. We all know that Boston is the hub of the universe, and I am hopeful and I am confident that with your help, Boston will also be the hub of high-speed regional rail as well. Thank you very much, Madam President, and I will ask for suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I first rise to just sign on, please. As fourth, when I was working with Amtrak, I was fourth-generation railroad, and one thing that I learned quickly on my trips to New York is you can't get to Springfield unless you go to New York. To get to Springfield, you have to go to New York and then up. So, I just want to commend the maker. Now we can get out to the casino, the MGM in Springfield and put it all on red. Thank you. Play on words there, put it on the red. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Baker. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zakim, Counselor Janey, Counselor Janey, as well as the Chair. Counselor O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0733. All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0733 has been adopted. Just going to take a quick recess. the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, and wanted to assign that to the Committee on the whole. Any objections to the reassignment?
Thank you so much.
It's still going to committee. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If we could reflect the change in the committee assignment? And now, let's go on to docket 0734, and to read that into the record.
Docket number 0734, Counselor Edwards offered the following order for hearing regarding student workers and labor practices in Boston's institutions of higher education.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. And actually, just for a point of clarification, there is a new version, that's a substitute for the previous version that was in the files, and everyone should have a copy of that. Any objections to substitution? No objections? Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to note, I've gone on record many times in supporting folks being able to fight for workers' rights and making sure that they have a voice. And so what I feel in this case, I've said before, workers need to be able to organize, to fight for decent wages, to fight for a voice, no matter where they're working. And so this conversation is about looking at the workplace in broader sense, looking at universities as a workplace, and looking at ways in which we can assure that those working at universities, whether they're cleaning the hallways, whether they are teaching, or whether they are student teachers, have a voice and are assured basic rights. So I look forward to this conversation. We're going to invite in good actors, we're going to invite in folks who are working wonderfully with student working organizers, we're going to look at all different models of how students have organized themselves, and I look forward to a really robust conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Janey, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zakim, as well as the Chair. Docket 0734 will be assigned to the Committee on Jobs, Wages, and Workforce Development.
Docket number 0735, Councilors Edwards and Asabi George offered the following order for hearing regarding parking reform in the city of Boston.
Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and I wanted to confirm, did you want me to suspend? Yes, okay. I'd like to suspend, I'm so sorry, Rule 12? Rule 12. I'm very sorry. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Campbell to the resolution as a third original co-sponsor under Rule 12.
Any objections? Madam Clerk, if you could add me as a third co-sponsor. Thank you so much. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Last week, we had, I think of what I thought was a robust conversation about a specific ordinance proposed by my colleague, Michelle Wu, bravely proposed by my colleague, Michelle Wu, on the parking fines and looking at it, and it honestly sparked off conversation amongst us, saying it really does take a holistic view to planning, even in parking. And that's what we haven't really been doing as a city. You know, we're handing out parking passes, we have a finite amount of land, but we don't have actually, but we're getting an infinite amount of parking passes out for free. And so we need to look at every single tool in the toolbox when it comes to parking right now. We do need parking reform in the city of Boston. Looking at the fees is one angle, but literally, looking at angled parking, looking at planning corridors for parking, looking at charging for parking, and how we can actually raise revenue from people who don't live in Boston, who come and park by the tees for two hours to go shopping for free. Why we aren't generating revenue from those individuals, why we aren't looking at Parking Task Force like we have in East Boston that literally is going to help plan for what the parking could look like and what they're willing to sustain and pay for in East Boston, and making sure the enforcement is actually getting done. All of these things is a comprehensive conversation that I think the city council should be leading on, and I'm very excited, and I also believe not only with our leadership, we're providing the room for neighborhoods to come in and actually say, this is what works for us in Matapan, this is what works for us in East Boston, this is what works for us in Charlestown. Technically, all of us are feeling some kind of pain and strain from the lack of parking, but not all of us, not all solutions are made for every single neighborhood. So I think this is a way of having that reform, leading it, working with the administration. Again, I want to note Gina and the BTD came out to the Parking Task Force Committee, or meeting, excited to hear from the neighborhood. I think that they would happily do so, hear from other neighborhoods about the solutions that we have. So I look forward to having this hearing and how we can make sure neighborhoods are right at the forefront in defining how parking could work for them.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Edwards for her partnership in this work. Following last week's conversation around the fees for residential parking stickers, Counselor Edwards and I had a conversation about it really needs to be a bigger conversation than just about whether or not we should be fining or creating a fee around residential stickers. It is about looking at this more holistically as a city, by neighborhood by neighborhood, and having a conversation about the impacts that are directly impacting our city, especially when it comes to parking, but it's about the movement of people, it's the movement of people on foot, on bike, in car, and that conversation needs to be what we're having as a council in partnership, obviously, with the Transportation Department, but more importantly, in partnership with our residents, our business owners across the city of Boston, in our neighborhoods. And for me, when Counselor Edwards last week shared some of the work here before this body that's happening in East Boston, I thought that is really where our conversations need to be happening. So I'm excited to get to this piece, I'm excited to get to this again in a broad way, but then also in a very focused way, neighborhood by neighborhood. So thank you, Council President, for your partnership in this, and Counselor Edwards and the entire body for the work that lies ahead for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George, and thank you guys for the partnership. Look forward to joining it and continuing the conversations happening in D4 and expanding them to bring in other districts to find solutions that are specific and taking consideration, every neighborhood is different. So thank you. At this time, does anyone else want to speak on this docket or add their name? Counselor O'Malley, I can't. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Janey, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zakim, as well as the Chair. Docket 0735 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 0736, Counselor Wu offered the following, a hearing order regarding the city council by annual urban renewal progress update.
Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is, I think, the maybe fourth or fifth time we're filing this as a formality to create the docket number. This is part of the checkups every six months with the BPD-A that came out of the council's discussions around the approval of extending their urban renewal powers in 2016, which are good for six years through 2022, and so these are part of the every-six-month conversations. The next one, we had scheduled with the BPD-A for Friday, May 10th, at 10:00 a.m. here in the council chamber, and so had just realized we needed to create the docket to be able to actually notice the hearing. So hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. At this time, anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I guess you can add your name if you'd like. Yes, I see Counselor Asabi George. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Edwards. Just for a point of clarification, I did not make that clear. I said if anyone would like to speak on the matter, but if you would like to add your name. I'll try this again, sorry about that. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Janey, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Zakim, as well as the Chair. Docket 0736 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 0737, Counselor Asabi George offered the following, an ordinance to provide for safe disposal of sharps through the establishment of a product stewardship program.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. You've all heard me talk about the improper disposal of sharps and needles across our city. We know the city of Boston and the Boston Public Health Commission have collected hundreds of thousands of needles. That does not measure the countless needles that we know are ending up in household trash. We've got not only an opioid crisis and substance use disorders that are contributing to the improper disposal of needles, but we also have those that are dealing with chronic illnesses and dealing with substance use disorders at home with needles ending up in household waste. Most of the needles that were collected last week during our Needle Takeback Day involved our residents who are, that are unable to dispose of their needle due to the expense of disposal. It is important, it is critical, that our pharmacies play a role in the life cycle of our needles, that proper disposal is a responsibility that our pharmacies in our city need to participate in. So this ordinance would mandate that our pharmacies, especially our larger pharmacies, participate in needle takeback. We do have some worry and concern about the impacts. We do have some worry and concern about the impacts of mandating this on some of our smaller pharmacies across our city, so there's a conversation that I look forward to having through the hearing and the work ahead on this ordinance. Madam Chair, I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this and look forward to the work ahead in working on the parts and the lessons learned from the effort under the leadership of Counsel Flaherty a few years ago. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Garrison, Counsel Janey, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 0737 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Moving on to personnel orders.
Docket number 0738, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Siomo.
Counsel Siomo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0738. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docket 0738 has been passed.
Docket number 0739, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Siomo.
Counsel Siomo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0739. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, Docket 0739 has been passed. I am informed by the clerk that there are two late filed matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objections and seeing no objections, the two late filed matters are so added. And just for clarification, one is a hearing order and the other is a personnel order. We'll start with the personnel order. Madam Clerk, if you could read the first late file into the record.
Thank you, Madam President. On May 1, 2019, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Garrison.
Counsel Garrison seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the first late file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the first late file matter has been passed.
Madam President, would you like me to read first and last?
That would be great, thank you.
Offered by Counsel Flynn in the City of Boston City Council, order for hearing to discuss the safety of construction sites in the City of Boston. Whereas the City of Boston is experiencing an unprecedented building boom with large-scale construction sites set up in various neighborhoods, including the South Boston waterfront and the South End, downtown, Back Bay, and the West End. Whereas it is imperative that our residents and construction workers are safe in and around the areas of these construction sites, especially considering our densely populated neighborhoods, and we need to ensure that these construction sites have safety procedures that protect their workers and residents. Now therefore be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to discuss the existing safety procedures and precautions at construction sites and ways that the city can ensure the protection and well-being of our workers and residents. Residents from the Inspection Services Department, Boston Police, and other relevant interested parties shall be invited to testify filed in the council on January 1, 2019.
Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'm calling this hearing because of the recent tragic accident in Seattle where a crane collapsed, killing four people, two construction workers, and two bypasses, injuring some people as well. Twenty percent of fatalities in our workforce is on the construction site. I'm a strong supporter, like all of my colleagues, in the federal OSHA program, but I also want to make sure that we can do everything possible to make sure that our, with our booming Boston economy, we see cranes almost in every neighborhood. We want to make sure that our workforce and our neighbors that live near a construction site are also protected. We're fortunate to have outstanding leadership from our building trades and our unions providing training and safety for those workers. We also want to make sure that we coordinate communication or planning with various city departments, including Inspection Services, the Boston Police, the Boston Fire. Our Water and Sewer Department Commission is also involved in construction. We want to make sure that our city employees as well are protected at the work site. So this is an opportunity for us to learn more about the safety of our workers in Boston, and I'm confident we are doing as much as we possibly can, but this is an opportunity for us to learn more, and if there are any ways to make some changes to ensure that we are as safe as we possibly can, that's the hope of this hearing, is to make sure that our workers are protected and our residents are protected as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Garrison, Counsel Janey, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. The second late file matter will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services, Veterans, and Military Affairs. Anyone looking to remove a matter from the green sheets? Moving right along. At this time, going back to, actually, Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I apologize for going back again, but wanted to ask for reconsideration on Docket number 0732, to keep the docket in Planning, Development, and Transportation. I appreciate the sidebar that we had, and just reflecting after the reassignment, there are similar resolutions on development already in committee, and for consistency's sake, my request would be that it also be assigned to the committee with every other item like that.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Thank you, Counsel Wu. I considered moving another resolution previous on a similar topic, dealing with the hotel issue, and after conversation with the Chair of Committee on Planning, Development, want to reassign and put, or let remain, I should say, the original assignment of Docket 0732 to remain in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Any objections to that? Madam Clerk, if we could reflect it going back, that would be great. Thank you, Counsel Wu. And now, moving on to the consent agenda, I am informed by the clerk that there are zero late filed matters, which in the absence, actually, there are zero late filed matters to be added. At this time, the Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. And at this time, I ask all counselors, staff, guests to please rise. Oh, actually, I apologize. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Sorry, I wanted to make a brief statement today. For those of you who are probably already know, my sister's a professor at UNC Charlotte where the shooting was yesterday. She left campus right before. Who? As I stated, my sister's a professor at UNC Charlotte, and she had left campus right before the shooting had started. And so I just wanted to, one, thank folks who reached out to my family, but also, it just never has hit that close to have any kind of form of shooting anywhere near a member of my family. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff being investigated and whatever, so I don't really want to center the shooter at this moment. I just wanted us as a city council to express our condolences and solidarity with the students and professors at UNC Charlotte. I believe they don't have classes today. They will be having a vigil tonight. From my understanding, six people shot, two have perished. So I just wanted to, again, thank folks who reached out, and, yeah, it just was a moment for our family yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Permission to make a statement regarding Docket 0459. There was no action to be taken, so I just wanted to kind of bring people up to speed about the hearing that we had this week.
Is this on the?
No, no, no. This was a hearing that we had that was for the order for a hearing regarding biannual review of the Boston Employment Commission and Boston residency jobs policy. I just wanted to speak on it for a minute if people are okay.
Counsel Baker.
Okay, thank you. So we had a hearing this week, and I thank Counsel Edwards, Counsel Janey, Counsel Asabi George, and Counsel Flynn for coming. The committee held a hearing on Friday, April 26, and we heard testimony from John Barrows, Chief of Economic Development, Selena Barrios Milner, Director of Equity and Inclusion, Christopher Brown, Manager of the Boston Residency Jobs Policy, and Sharice Hearn, Deputy Director of Equity and Inclusion. They gave the committee an update and breakdowns of total projects from 1018 to 319 and future plans, 49 total projects. The mayor also plans to launch new programs in early May, which will be the new BRJP Salesforce platform that will transform data tracking and lead to greater accountability, we hope, transparency and enforcement, increase outreach and engagement to develop a pipeline of workers, and also to develop a sanction evaluation enforcement protocol. There'll also be a Boston Residence Job Policy Salesforce for City Council and internal stakeholders demo on Tuesday, May 14, at 11:00 a.m. in Room 937A. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Any other announcements? Okay, at this time, I would like all guests, colleagues, and staff to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, Bernadette O'Reilly. For Counselor Flynn, Robert Ng. For Counselor Janey, Edith Joseph. Petra Perez. For Counselor Janey and the Chair, John Singleton. For Counsel Flaherty, Siomo, and Counsel O'Malley, John Jack O'Connor. For Counselors Flynn, Baker, and Flaherty, Rosalie Samboni-Boylan. And let's all keep in mind the folks at the UNC Charlotte community. Thank you, Counsel Edwards. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in this chamber on Wednesday, May 8, at noon. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.